All right. Good afternoon. Welcome. This is Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, June 15. Thank you for joining us. Our agenda this evening. Or this afternoon, the first item that's marked is on page four. So are there any items that the council would like to discuss? Prior to that, prior to page four? Yes, go ahead, Renee.
I just had a question. I noticed the last few agendas and I saw it when I was looking over it this weekend. I don't know which item it is now, but there seemed to be like a resignation every time we meet from the the commission we put together last year.
Which commission?
I'm looking.
The Equity?
Yes.
Uh, Task Force?
Yeah, is there like some kind of issue with why that seems to be all of the people falling off?
Um, well, we've, it's only been with representatives of one of the groups that's represented on the and Lon or Amal, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we've had any resignations outside of that group and they've been with different circumstances, replacing members. They have two representatives on the on the task force and they've had, you know, this most recent one is a job related issue, so.
So there's not a, there's not a problem with the makeup, like there's no tension that people
Not at all.
fleeing, it's just scheduling.
Not at all.
Okay.
It's just the, the, the one group deciding who's going to be their representative and it's changed because of circumstances, but Lon, anything to add to that or?
No, it's largely been just things out of their control. And as you said, the last one was a relocation for a job out of state.
Yeah.
Cool. Okay, just thought I'd ask because it's new and
That's a good question and probably other people are wondering the same thing. So thanks for asking it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, but no, things are going well with the, with the task force and making progress. Any, anything else before page four? Okay, then we'll move on to page four. B three and B four are not marked. Any questions on those? Okay, we'll move on to page B five. Contract with Boomerang Corporation for Emergency Waterway Debris Removal Services. Mr. Miller.
Your Honor, Council, thank you. So this proposed resolution, we're proposing to extend the contract with Boomerang. Initially, when we put the contract together for the waterway debris services, we want to be completed by June 1st. We're going to go ahead and extend the contract into August. Reason being is that we have now taken over waterway cleanup operations. I say we, public service staff. So we're about four to six weeks out from completing that project. Right now, we're over in Dry Creek. We're hoping to get that done in the next two weeks and then we'll be wrapping up in the, in the following weeks thereafter. So Boomerang has a contract for collections and debris processing or the grinding of the, of the wood chips. We met with them. They're okay with this. Therefore, we're recommending moving forward.
Any questions for Ryan? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, so Ryan, they were, they were originally working in the creek or in the waterway?
Boomerang had the contract to collect the debris from the designated access points. Take it back to the disposal site, processing, take it over to the court.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so they're going to continue with that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Other questions for Ryan on this item? And just so I'm clear, Randy is not joining us virtually, right? He's not?
He is not.
Okay. Just so we, okay. All right, then we will move on with the remainder of page four. Are there any items on page four? Or page five that any council member would like to discuss or ask questions about? Okay. Page six, gone down to A four. Any items? In that group? Okay, we'll move on to A five. Which is Resolution approving proposed allocation of hotel motel funding. Right?
Good afternoon. This is the, this is to approve for Thursday night to approve the resolution of the allocation for the hotel motel funding for fiscal year 21 and 22. Just as a background, this is the hotel motel tax that is charged on overnight stays. By, by state code, we are, we are obligated to spend 50% of these dollars on culture, recreation and promoting tourism. There's a big long paragraph in the state code and the other 50% can be spent on any purpose. We choose to spend more than the 50%. So we have a, so we have a grant program that every year it opens at the start of April. And this year we had 15 applications for a total of just under $295,000. We have a hotel motel review committee that meant, that met on the 7th of June last week. I just wanted to thank all the committee members for the hard work. It's a lot of work to review all the applications. It's quite an in-depth process. Including our council representative, council person Sternad. When the budget was adopted, there was $175,000 awarded for the grant program out of the hotel motel fund. Due to COVID, there was approximately $35,000 that was not spent over the last couple of fiscal years. These were programs and events that did not happen, that they had applied for the dollars and they were allocated. So because of this and due to the fact that the organizations are obviously still feeling the effects of COVID, staff on the committee have made a recommendation to increase by that amount, by, by the $35,000. So that would bring the total up to 210 instead of 175,000. So they, so they support this increase. Staff also supports this increase. That is what we plan to outline in the resolution, but we would like obviously council feedback and direction. If there were any concerns around not increasing the allocation to 210,000.
Does that leave any, don't, don't we always have a balance that's sort of in the account or?
There is, yes, but this wouldn't affect the fund balance. It's just purely unspent dollars from the last two fiscal years that are still in the fund balance. So it's actually more than what
Okay. So the fund balance is higher. There's still going to be a remaining minimum balance in the account.
And it's a healthy fund right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
Um, yeah, so that would be the last column that you'd be looking at if there were no concerns. And that's the way that we will outline the resolution, but obviously if you guys have any concerns about not increasing the budget, then tonight would be the time to discuss those. Like I said, the main reason for the increase is the unspent dollars. So, so Mr. Serna is not here tonight. He was the council representative on the committee. But if you have any questions, I can take those now.
So that $30,000 that was just kind of divided up across all of them?
So they did come up with their 175 allocation, which was some tough, they had to make some tough decisions. When they came up with the allocation for the 210, they did. It, there was a few scenarios that the group went back and forth. One was a straight percentage allocation increase from the like 175 to the 210 across the whole board. They decided to do it another way. They decided that because of the extra dollars, they could then look at, because there's a ranking and scoring system that they go through. They looked at it and they, the group, there, the groups that scored higher from the overall rankings from their score sheets. They decided to give a slightly higher percentage allocation. And then the other groups that scored slightly lower, they decided that if they could at least fund them 50%. So we don't have the score sheets and all of the rankings here, but that was their methodology.
Any, did any of the, the applicants receive more than they requested?
No.
None, okay.
No. And we did have one new group because most, most years we are seeing the same groups that apply, but this year we did have a new one, which is Ticket Forward, which is a mini pitch at Hannah Park. So myself being a soccer fan, I'm, I'm very excited about that.
Yeah, I just, you know, it might've been a good opportunity to really infuse some extra funds into the holiday lighting.
So that's actually a budgeted item out of the hotel motel anyway.
It is, okay.
It is.
So is that, is that new this year?
I believe it's the last, it, it was, it wasn't actually in the budget last year, but it was dollars that was spent unamended into last year's budget. But it's in this year's budget to, to spend for that purpose.
Okay.
So it's just outside of the ground.
Coming forward, so.
Mayor, I did want to say that council member Sternad is joined. He's via Zoom.
Did you want to add something?
I was just going to add, because you asked the question about, is that new? The request for the dollars that Marion Leadership in Action for the Holiday Lights Program used to put forth was never in alignment with our budget process. When I served on the Marion Leadership in Action Group, I kind of brought that to light and they have realigned that. So we had gotten a request in advance of budget and so then it was included in the budget process and that's the plan going forward.
Yeah, okay, I was just saying that it's also, it's, it was just an opportunity that you could, that the Parks Department could really like, you know, have extra funds to make an even bigger splash than last year with, with holiday lighting, because that seemed to be so popular. And it is a tourism draw. It is a, you know, a draw to the community. But it's, you know, I'm just one person. This is my opinion, but, but thanks for that. Any, anything else you wanted to add before we take questions from everybody else? Sorry. Okay, questions? Go ahead.
You pretty much covered it. I just remember our discussion, I think it was this past Christmas. Or past holidays where we were asked to double what we normally put forward. And so I thought this might be a good opportunity with the additional 35,000 or what have you to allocate that, but it sounds like it's been worked out. So same page.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, with, with what we did this last year, I mean, you know, we had gone out and done some private fundraising outside of what the leadership class did and outside of what the city had committed. We, we did some extra fundraising to, to be able to do what we did last year. I just thought that, you know, if, if in the future we have this opportunity, I think it'd be a good place to infuse some funds because the coal community really appreciated that. And I think it's, it's a, it's never going to be like a top priority in our budgeting. So when you have the extra funds like that, that's a nice thing to fund.
So I just wanted to add there, we are, we are planning to revamp the, revamp the grant program again. Because this is an increasing fund, which is great. We're trying to look at a way that the local government section and our own programs can maybe be allocated during the actual budget process, which would free up, then the ground program is just for nonprofits potentially. And then that would give you guys more flexibility during budget time to look at the hotel motel fund more in depth. At that time, which would be a chance to look at some other programs of the council we support.
Okay. Okay, other questions on this item? Go ahead. Well.
Kind of answered there with what you said, one of my questions, but so all the money in the fund gets allocated every year. So the 175 that was awarded is how much was in the fund? There's nothing, is there leftover?
So, yes, there is some leftover. It's hard because with hotel, with, with the COVID and the new hotel coming online, it's been very hard to forecast the revenues, given that we do budget. You know, like six to eight months before this program even comes into effect. So we have there, so there is, it's a healthy fund right now. So that's why we're trying to look this year at seeing how we can utilize that fund better. We did budget conservatively with 175 because we didn't know the effects. Now we've come in and we've got some more revenue. So we're trying to look at better processes around that fund that would help support council making the decisions at budget time plus giving the opportunity to the nonprofits to have their share also.
That was kind of, it was kind of a two-part question. You kind of answered, because looking at the department reports, it shows that the hotel motel fund is at 277,000.
Right.
So that's 100,000 more than what was budgeted. So there, for the next budget round.
We always
Maybe more for, that we could allocate towards holiday lights because
Correct.
Fund is so much higher than it has been in the past.
Now, we do like to keep a surplus in that fund because we don't know how much of that 175 will be potentially spent in July and August. So we do, on that hotel motel revenue will come in throughout the whole year. So we do need to make sure that, that there is a certain, that there is a cushion there. But there is definitely room when we come back to council. I would presume in the next maybe couple of months to look at this program and see some room for improvement around the budget.
Do you know, sorry, a few more questions. Do you know how much was allocated in the budget this year for the holiday lights?
I believe it was, or I can, I can get that for Thursday, I believe is around 10 or 15,000.
15, okay, thank you.
Yeah, which as we've found out is not a lot of money for, because those things are very expensive. So great discussion. Thank you. Any other questions on this topic? Yes, I see Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see the hand button here anymore. So I just want to thank Brian and the rest of the committee that that works diligently on this. This is a huge process to go through and it's compiled of, of a bunch of information. And so like what Brian says, it is made up of a a metrics type system and it's ranked and scored. And we're always going to be competing against the nonprofits versus the local government side of it. And so when we rank it, it's very easy to go through that first $175,000 and see what projects will not be fully funded. What will be partially funded and see which ones of these will potentially struggle without a majority of funding. So I, I would agree with the rest of the committee that what has been presented here. Again, Brian did a great job of putting this together. There is some proposals for next year, taking a look at it, but we do take a look a lot as to what, what does generate and drive that tourism back into our community and, and all of these items do do that. It's, it's a very difficult challenge to try to be fair and equal across the board on that. So I just wanted to express my gratitude to the city staff and the committee that makes this up. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thanks for all your work on it. Oh, go, I'm sorry, you had a question?
I was just gonna, I, I assume you want to know what we're in favor of. So I would say I would be in favor of spending that extra or allocating that extra to go to the 210. Because you do need to know that, right?
Yeah, so that's the way we were going to put the resolution unless there was any consensus that we should not.
No, I mean, I'm good with it.
It was like the consensus is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot. Okay, on page seven. Items B one and B two are not marked for discussion. Any questions on those?
Yes, Your Honor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just, Lon knows this is one of my periodic questions. And so I, this is really just to give me the absolute assurance of that I'm interpreting this right, but in terms of sanitary sewer charges as well as then solid waste charges. It's my understanding at this point that those are mostly influenced by external cost factors that are outside of the city. And so I just want to affirm that somewhat for the record here that that's the case and my understanding is right. And I feel like I should write a tuition payment to somebody for understanding municipal finance.
Yeah, essentially of those, especially with the solid waste one this year, we're losing the community credit, which we applied as a credit towards the cost of that service. But also we've seen fourfold to fivefold escalation in the cost of recycling. And so those are fees that we just have to pay out to an agency that we don't have control over what they charge. And the sanitary sewer account is also largely influenced by the cost of treatment services with the city of Cedar Rapids. And again, we don't really have control over that. And I'm assuming that people want to continue to be able to flush. So we've got to keep paying those bills.
Thank you. And I, I think we also lost a recycling credit in there. Yes.
Yeah, that's the community credit that I was referring to that we lost on the solid waste side.
Right, thank you.
Okay, other questions on, on B one or B two? We'll move on to D one under parks. Seth?
Good evening. So we do have a, a resolution to award a contract for the stump removal and turf restoration in the right of way. So originally we had, the RFP deadline was due for proposals June 1st. We had vendors that were a little delayed on getting those back. So we extended that to June 9th. We did receive three bids. And so I, I do have a bid tabulation, I think on the next slide here. Perfect. So, so we had three bids, the lowest being Frank's Tree Service, and they're actually 225 per stump. I do want to put in that we'll have the title changed here for this, because originally we're estimating 1500 stumps removed in the right of way. And we actually have 1,065 stumps in the right of way for, for removal. And so at 225 per stump, it's going to be $2,339 in 625 cents. So deadline for the completion, they proposed the deadline that we had, I mean, RFP, which is November 1st of, of 2022. So we're giving two full seasons for those, for those removals. They'll likely get it done much sooner than that, but for, for the purposes of the contract, we'll have it for November 1st, 2022. The other bids came in 275 and 285 at almost 1,000 stumps. We, staff is recommending to go with, proceed with Frank's Tree Service. At the next slide two, you'll just kind of see the map of where the 1,000 stumps are, majority of it in the center of town. So and we'll work with Frank's Tree Service on setting up phasing project for that. We'll also do media releases to recommend for people to remove any landscape and vegetative or non, or vegetative material along the stumps. And then I think there's one more slide. No, never mind. That was it. So.
Can we go back to the first slide?
Yes, absolutely. The one with the, there we go. So Frank Tree Services here in, here in Marion, we had Suretree Service. They're working, they're a bunch of, well, they're out of central city. And then SNS Trees is a, a few different subs that have a, a stump grinder. And then they have a, a local person that would do the turf restoration for that.
Yes, go ahead, Will. Just to clarify what the turf restoration means, is that cleaning up the ground of wood chunks and grading and seeding?
Yeah, so what the scope, scope of the work would be, would that they would need a ground within 12, 12 inches in depth. And then at least six inches, you know, from the, from the exterior, any roots that are on the surface, they would need to follow along the right of way. And then for the turf restoration, they would need to clean up the chips and then backfill with turf and then seed. Likely that would be all that's, that is done, the communication out because once you seed it, you know, we'll probably recommend probably a, a two inch lift to, for settling. But it will likely go back to the property owner to backfill, you know, six months to a year out. Because you're going to have that natural settling after the turf, turf restoration.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any additional questions on this item? So the, the, the total is 337,000?
It's, it's actually going to be for, on Thursday, it's going to be 2, 239,000. So the 3, 300,000 was when we were, we thought there was 1,500 stumps and we got confirmation last week that we actually only have 1,000. So.
Wow.
Yeah.
Significant.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clear up the discrepancy between the 337 and the agenda.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for Seth? Thank you, sir. Okay. Engineering E one is marked. Surprised they're not all marked this time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item E one is the establishment of the target PCI value for the pavement management program. Next slide. I've presented a couple of times on the pavement management program before and also sent a memo out to about a month ago on this. So I won't go into too much detail, but this is objective 4.1.1 of the strategic plan. On the DOT does drive all of our streets every two years to assign a PCI value to each street. The first step of the pavement management program process is to establish this target PCI value. So this is a key step here. With the target goal established, then we can work through budgets and a work program to actually get this program moving. And I just want to remind council that this is a living document. What we decide today will likely be changed in the future, given with additional data and just how we kind of massage the program through the years. So with that, I threw a target number of 60 on the motion. That was just a placeholder. I'll entertain any questions or if council wants to change that number for Thursday, feel free, but.
Go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, so changing the number would change the budget, right? So, and you had us, you assigned us homework. I remember this assignment because there were like a couple of roads that felt like I was in Cedar Rapids. And so sorry. So I'm wondering, you know, when, when could we? I don't know if I ever saw like how everybody rated everything. Did you aggregate that so that?
So I sent an email out in, oh, middle of May with a memo that had that aggregated out.
Would you mind pushing it out again just before Thursday? I don't know if it'll spark anything, but I'm curious. I don't remember going through it and comparing, but I would like to see what we ranked things and then how that measures up to a six to see if that truly should be our standard. So.
Yes, and then I also provided some additional graphs that show just the different budget levels versus the PCI and how it changes over the, I'm doing a 10-year period for our cycle. So.
Thank you. I'm sorry I missed it. I'm sure it's great. I actually am very interested in this. This is weird as that may sound, but thank you. I'll look at it again.
Okay, yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, um, I, I had a short bit of correspondence with Mike about this earlier in the week. I happened to notice that the firm, Pathway Services, was coursing its way through our neighborhood. And I understand that that's under the auspices of, I think, Iowa DOT. And they do basically roadway imaging and
Yeah, so they're actually doing, so they survey our years every two years. So the last time they surveyed was 2019. So they will be driving around this summer in 2021 to redo the survey and then we'll get the data probably likely in April of 2022.
Well, I found, I, first off, I, I did take a look at what their technology was and how they were doing a roadway profile and, and condition assessment.
Of course.
How does that, how does that fit into this total program? How will that information feed into this based on what we've already, or what we will be setting in terms of an acceptable roadway condition?
So not only do, so basically they'll survey it and they measure the, the lengths of cracks and the lengths of cracks in each direction. The roughness of the street and that's how they assign based off of all the data that it collects. That's how they aggregate into a calculation of the PCI value. The payment condition index. And then they also do imaging. So it's, we, it's almost like street view. We can get front and back of when they were actually surveyed it. So we can kind of see if we're getting a wonky value when I'm looking at the program. If a road is zero that we just paved and should be 100 or 90, and we can actually physically see what they drove and compare it to their results as well. If a road is zero that we just paved and should be a hundred or ninety, and we can actually physically see what they drove and compare it to their results as well. And all that's available online and I can send you the website and you can play around with it if you want and. I'll include that in the email I send out and.
I, I, I feel at risk even to ask one more question, but I'm going to be daring. What, so if we say a sixty is our desired value, we're going to have a body of images. A catalog of images collected through this means in order to have that as a reference point?
Yeah. I mean, we'll get this collected every two years regardless of the number you choose. I mean, this is the raw data that goes into the program itself. And then from there, we set the target goal and the budget and just try to track it from there. They'll update the PCI values every two years. So we have a biannual update to see how and to track our progress. And that's why I meant when this is a living document, we can see in, in six years if the PCI value set, we're not even close to meeting or far exceeding. Maybe we need to adjust it down or up. That sort of thing.
But the sixty is, is your recommendation or the?
That was my recommendation and but.
Well, I mean.
In the memo, I also presented another option that Cedar Rapids does. They don't do a target average. They do a ninety-five percent of the roads above a minimum. And so that's another option as well. So I mean, it's really council preference and how you in, in your heads feel like the numbers make sense to you intuitively. And really, if you break it down, the difference between sixty and thirty-five above a minimum, there's essentially the same. As I worked through the numbers in the program. So it's just how comfortable you feel with setting a number, I guess, you know, in either option.
Thirty-five above the minimum?
So they, they set their number, basically ninety-five percent of their roads need to be above thirty for their minimum.
I see.
It feels like thirty on some other places there.
Yes.
May I ask one question? So I know we had recently looked at something regarding lost funding verbiage. So what we decide with this could impact that, correct? Because don't, won't some lost funds, if that gets approved, be allocated to roadway repair?
I hope so.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right. Well, we'll stay tuned. Thanks.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. So I guess for Thursday, I'll leave it at sixty. And if during Thursday discussion, if you want to amend the motion, we can do it that way. That makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So E two through E five are not marked for discussion. Any questions on those?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. On, on E two. So I understand basically it's for quality assurance for the steel fabrication. My question would be, where is that fabrication going to be taking place? Is that infield or elsewhere?
No, it's actually at the mill, but it's being performed, Jake. I don't know if you're in South Dakota.
Okay.
We don't have enough staff or the certifications to send someone to South Dakota just to hang out.
Yeah, I, I, I get that.
Okay. Other questions? I guess go ahead, Will.
On E five, I know it's just a motion to receive and file referred attack, but I just wanted to comment to, looking at that, it just, it never dawned on me that there's no sidewalk. At, for Toby. There's no sidewalk on that side of the street for quite a way. I mean, all the way down to look like seventh. So I just, just. Kind of like the, the petition to get to a sidewalk or something there because it just shocked me. So that's all.
Good point. Okay. Other questions on E two through E five? All right, E six.
Yes, sir. So E six is a contract amendment with Schneider and Associates. So we already had them do, they're up to, I would say ninety-nine percent plans for the actual bridge. And then the construction all the way down to Eighth Avenue and then north of the bridge where it would tie into the Skogman Development. So this would expand that scope to take it all the way down to Marion Boulevard. So before we could not do that because the churn lane was where the center pier of the bridge was. Bridge is now gone, so we can add that as part of the project. It also includes adding the signal at Marion Boulevard and Alvernet. At eighth and Alvernet and Boyson and Alvernet as part of that project. The goal of this, by having this much design is when the infrastructure package is finally approved at the federal level. We would apply for this project and get this north-south corridor built as it is a key component of our road network to get this built.
Okay. Yeah, we've been talking about this one for a long time.
Since two thousand.
Yeah. So, and I agree with you. I think it's a key. Key corridor. Changed a lot of things. Any questions for Mike on this? Yes.
So Mike, in that original study done by Snyder and Associates. I think that was the option three A that really turned itself more north and south. They were depicting, I think, two or three options in that. And it was the one that was more north and south, wasn't it?
Yeah. And so even before we hired Schneider Associates, there was other previous studies that were done. That was that email that I sent out just to give you background on that. So yeah, since two thousand. City councils set the actual alignment of Alvernet Road. And since then, this is the farthest we've gotten the plans along. So. And we do have some exhibits on the, the PowerPoint, just kind of showing the limits of what it was before versus what we're adding to it. So you can see Eighth Avenue was the limit. We're extending it to the south to Marion Boulevard. And then I think the next slide shows it up on Boyson. So there is a future that isn't included with this, but that would extend it where it used to be straight north, south. And, and so we will leave that section for now. It can function how it is, but eventually that would be a future project as well.
Could, could those images that you just showed be shared with council?
That, yeah, I can email them.
Okay, thank you.
You said that the plan is to apply for federal funding with the infrastructure package?
Yeah, I'm assuming that this would classify as infrastructure, but again, our legislators haven't decided what infrastructure is yet, but I've never seen a road not be classified as infrastructure.
Okay. Okay. Other questions on this item? All right, E seven and E eight are not marked. Any questions on those two items? E nine, Mike?
So E nine, this was brought to council some time ago to solicit proposals for the approach. So similar to the navigation in your phone to get to a location, this is navigation in the plane to help the pilots land. So it tells them the altitude, speed to get them to go from where they're at in the, the air, to get them on the proper landing procedure or takeoff procedure. And so this firm is especially firm that does this type of work. They would come in and certify everything. They put obstructions that might be in there in the. Scenario. And then in order to keep it certified, they actually have to come in every five hundred and forty days and re-fly it and certify it. So this is a, a safety issue. So if there's clouds or inclement weather, this gives the pilots a way to use that navigation to help them. Safely land when they can't see the lights and stuff that are out there. So this is a, a safety component that was part of the, the CIP list through the airport committee.
I'm going to let Mayor Potem handle the discussion on this item.
And so the dollar amount that's in there does include the maintenance that is done in the future and the initial dollars that it costs to do it.
Questions? Grant?
Comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Just as a point of reference, Monticello, Vinton and McCoaketa Municipal airports. All have an instrument approach defined for their airports. And just to emphasize, this really is, you know, useful during. Suboptimum weather conditions for inbound air traffic. The other thing that it will ultimately do is with the availability of an instrument approach being defined and published for pilots to make use of. It's going to help increase the number of landings and takeoffs. At the airport, which is a desirable feature, certainly just for the operations of the airport. So I think it's first and foremost. Takeoff and landing flight safety. It brings us in line with a few other airports and it also then potentially enhances our overall. Number of operations that we'll see out of the airport. And I was just quoting all the learning that I have listened to from the airport committee.
Anybody else? Grant or Will, sorry. I was used to calling Grant Will. Will, please, do you have something to ask or contribute? We would love to hear from you this evening.
Thank you. Um. You said that it includes the ongoing maintenance?
Yeah. So every five hundred and forty days for the FAA, they have to re-fly it to make sure that something wasn't added or taken away, that then they would modify that flight procedure.
So, so, so they do that in five hundred and forty days from when it's installed or set up? And that's just the one time? So the one-time maintenance in the future?
No, every, every five hundred and forty days it has to be re-flown forever.
Forever. Yes. In that price?
For the maintenance prices, I think it's detailed in Exhibit E.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. It's a smaller portion compared to the total overall. Now, if we were to go in and say widen, lengthen our runway, we got to start over.
Will was, maybe this is part of your question, and it's might be part of my question too, but this, the, the cost. Is associated with that first go around and then every five hundred, whatever, thirty-four days, right? How, sort of, what does the contract say? How many years does that cover right from an?
But right now, we just have it for the first time. So we have the initial setup and then the first five hundred and forty days. And that's as far as the contract goes for now. But eventually we will have to have that so that every two years someone comes out and does that.
Absolutely. Okay. So this covers now and then five hundred and thirty-four days from now. Got it. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. I think we're good. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. On the community development, F one through F five are not marked for separate discussion. Any questions on those items? All right, F six is marked. This is the second consideration of. The amendment to the Code of Ordinances regarding bicycle regulations. If Kesha and Tom are, yep, there we go.
We'll tag team, but Kesha's going to do all the hard work. We, we did meet after the meeting and, and kind of listened, kind of replayed and talked through the council discussion. We met with Chief Kits Miller and talked through some of the items and Kesha provided a memo, but I think I'll let her outline. This has kind of been. A project she's been working on much more in depth than I.
Yeah. And I would say that any of the questions that came up last time, I wasn't necessarily, I wouldn't have been able to answer them. So a couple of questions in particular that I heard in the minutes was the discussion on thirteen and under. And I guess the way I wrote it was. You can only be on the sidewalk thirteen and under if you're with an adult. Talking with the Cedar Rapids staff. As I noted in the memo, it's just kind of that slight wording change of thirteen under and any accompanying adult. So. Under thirteen, good to go. Regardless of how many kids are riding, you know, a whole group of friends and any accompanying adults. So if you have a five-year-old, obviously. The five-year-old and the parent can ride on the sidewalk together. You don't have to have mom walking beside. And regardless, anybody can walk their wheels as well. So if mom wants to walk and says, Timmy, you have to walk too. Timmy can walk on the sidewalk too. So there's no, no problem walking the wheels. It's just that riding that was a little caveat to that. And one other thing to note, that one other amendment that I have in red in the attached memo was just the wording of. So this is a small change that staff had done. Riding on roadways, basically when a shared use path exists on a roadway. Person operating a bicycle or stand-up scooter may use either the path of the bicycle lane or the roadway, so long as they don't back up traffic. Basically, if there's a bike lane and you're riding in the vehicular travel lane, you get, get in the bike lane or get on the side path. Obviously, if there's no side path, there's no bike lane, you full rights of the road, just like any cyclist. So that was just one of those things that's. Allows us to enforce that in kind of those rare circumstances. One other thing to note is that, and I mentioned this in the memo, is that the city of Cedar Rapids is looking at. The wording with or without pedals when describing a bicycle. Right now, our code does describe bicycles, either electric assist or full-on bicycle or tricycle. With pedals. And so you can have an electric assist. The ones that we did out at the Y has like a full throttle on it. You don't even have to pedal. If you don't want to, I mean, it's meant for assist, but those have pedals on them. So that's the difference. Your battery runs out, you still have your pedals and you can kind of lumber through. Whereas the scooters, per our code, the way it's written now, would still be prohibited on side paths on bike lanes. They'd, they'd be able to be treated kind of like a moped in the street. And so if the council wanted to add those in, we can surely add with or without pedals. Right now, it's being explored by the city of Cedar Rapids. It's not been adopted yet. So I know that Councilman Jensen also said, you know, we kind of wanted to go online with what Cedar Rapids was doing, but they haven't done that yet. So, and I noted in the memo that the electric sit-down scooters, so kind of an electric moped, I would call it. Is something in a, in a trial phase of their bike share program. So it's not a, it's not a given, but it, it is fairly popular as well. And that is something that, A, we don't have that system in Marion yet. I would hope that once we get a few trail connections between us and Cedar Rapids, we'd. We'd explore that a little bit more and we could address that at that time. But that's, that's up to the council. If you guys would prefer the wording be added or leave it as is right now.
Okay. So. Your presentation today was mostly to clarify some of the questions from the last time and.
Yes.
Okay. And.
And then just kind of like.
Answer questions if anybody has additional questions. Let's see, Grant has a question.
Yeah. It's so on the heels of the unfortunate news that came out on June tenth in Cedar Rapids, where two kids. Had sustained injuries after a collision with a vehicle. And I think they came out onto, I think it was Mount Vernon Road. I, I believe they were riding, it, it was both of them riding a single scooter, if I'm not mistaken. That. Event gave me pause to think about. Two up riders on scooters. Does, does our proposed change, set of changes permit that?
The code as it was written and as it's been written prohibits riding a bike for more than it is intended to ride. So if you have a tandem bike, obviously you can have two people on it. It has two seats too. But double riding is prohibited.
Does the proposed language address scooters and two up riders?
The proposed code, so right now, as it's written, only talks about bikes, tricycles as. With pedals. So this code doesn't really address scooters, the, the electric sit-down scooters without pedals. Like the electric stand-up scooters, that would still be, again, prohibited riding more than the intended use of the. Of the vehicle.
So stand-up scooters electrified, would, we would permit two up?
No.
No.
No, it's, they're intended for one.
Okay. Okay. I just, I just want to make sure we've got, maybe it's just more for my own clarity, but I think we just need to establish that, given the severity of that accident that was just experienced here unfortunately. So, okay. Okay, no bicycle or stand-up scooter shall be used to carry more persons than at one time, other than its design basis, yep.
So just to repeat that for the recording. Mr. Trey Hart said that it's specifically addressed in the proposed ordinance as as. Was just.
Good.
And that was in the, that was in the old, that's been on, that's not new language to our code, we just added stand-up scooters in there.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Grant. Anyone, any other questions? On this item? This is a side note, I saw two people this morning driving out of the, riding out of the. Y parking lot on the, on the tricycles, so good to see people using those.
I think, I think there will be.
Enjoying the nice weather. Okay, thank you, Kesha. And we are right on time, good job. Rachel. The last item is the lost ballot language.
Thank you, Your Honor, as the council knows, the mayors in the Cedar Rapids metro area got together and announced that this fall, we were going to be seeking to do an extension of the collection of the local option sales tax. And included in the council packet was a memo that details a a pretty good listing of the projects that we have completed to date using local option sales tax. But one of the key pieces that we have to do in order to get it on the ballot is to decide on what the ballot language itself will be. Because that has to be sent, provided to Lynn County to actually be printed on the forms that the people will actually use to vote on that later on this fall. So when it was renewed in two thousand and thirteen, we went fairly simple. The two thousand and nine one had quite an extensive breakdown of categories. And in the second one, we, the council elected to make it simpler and more clear and just did a seventy percent, thirty percent split. Now, one thing that I will note is that the community projects can include infrastructure. So if we end up at the end of this one and we're at seventy-two percent on infrastructure, we're fine, because by definition, those are a community project. But the funding for the community projects piece has really been key for us to complete a lot of the quality of life improvements at our parks. One of the things that we didn't really show in here is what we've been able to use those lost dollars for to leverage outside funding. But to give you one example, the amphitheater at Lau Park, I believe we put seven hundred and fifty thousand of that in on a two-point-three-five million-dollar project. And the rest was fundraised, grants, other contributions to help us to finish that project. So just wanted to kick off the conversation with the city council, see if anybody had strong feelings about whether or not we should adjust this moving forward, or if you were comfortable with the split. After that, the next piece would be for a future conversation to start talking about if there are centerpiece projects or pieces that you would like to see local option sales tax committed to in the past. And what I'm kind of alluding to there is that many of the ones that we used of lost funding for came out of the Imagine Eight process. And with Imagine X, we have some like Creekside Pride and some community aquatics that are tied to that. So there are potentially projects from some of those outside initiatives that we could make as centerpieces of what we would use local option sales tax funding for as well. But the intent of this meeting was just to get feedback from council on how you felt about the ballot language. And if you're, uh, want to change it or keep with it, then we would come back to you with more info on some suggestions on what to do for allocating it.
Great. Discussion on this, yes, Renee?
I'll keep it simple, I like the seventy-thirty split and I like the generic language. I think it just gives us more ability to be nimble while when we're allocating these. But I do like the split because. While community projects are great, they don't impact everybody, and I think that the infrastructure impacts every resident. So I I do think it should be significantly more, but I like what we've been doing, I would just vote to continue that.
So you think there should be more than seventy percent for infrastructure?
No, I think seventy percent.
Oh, okay.
Seventy-thirty, I think, is spot on.
Okay, all right, just one. Other, other comments?
Your Honor? Yes, yeah, I I agree with that unless there's a compelling reason to alter it, I think seventy-thirty. In in the manner that we have it seems to make some sense. When do we have to finalize and submit this again?
The lost ballot language would need to be to the county by August tenth.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's, I like having the community projects component. I think we've been able to leverage this money to do a lot of great things. And what I think would be really helpful for us and for the community to see what the total dollars were on specific projects. I mean, I think if we looked at the total list of projects, we probably would be astounded. Because a lot of projects have been touched by lost, lost funding. But if we looked at the amount of lost funding that went into a project and how much was leveraged. You know, what the total project was and how this funding helped make it, make those projects possible. I think that that would be really neat for the community to see, is how much we were able to get done because these funds were available. To to help those projects, whether they're streets and, you know, ordinary, you know, typical infrastructure, or whether they're, you know, more amenities and those types of projects. I think all around, the community's really been benefited by these funds. And we've, I think you've shared before, Marion has, I mean, we've really benefited from this more than. How am I gonna say that?
We, we tend to pull in, because of the way they're pooled and because Marion is growing, we pull in, at least the last time around, about one-point-three cents for every penny that's collected in Marion. So we benefit from the larger pool from Lynn County.
Yeah, we have a net benefit.
Yep.
Other questions or comments? So is there, is there something coming up on the, on the agenda to vote on, or is this just a discussion?
We would have a motion on Thursday to direct staff to use the same ballot language as the prior one. And then we can start framing up a list of projects. As council knows, there's no shortage of list of projects in the out years on the CIP, so we'll, we'll be able to find lots of landing spots for it.
Okay. Yes, Renee?
Just one more thing, because this is the discussion and then it's going to come on the ballot. Does staff have a recommendation based on where we came from and what we did to make a change, or has this served staff well?
Our recommendation was to continue with this language. One of the things that I think it does is that, as the council knows, when you're looking at the list of projects on a CIP. Roads and things like that are always going to rank highly, and unless you actually designate funding for those other projects, it's very, can be very difficult for them to compete year over year. Even though they have a great impact on the community. And I would contend that those projects are a big part of why people are choosing to live Marion in when they have choices to live elsewhere. But this really makes sure that they, we can complete some of those projects over time.
That's a very good point, I think you look at the amphitheater, I mean, can you imagine if we didn't have that today? Or the library project or project after project, Prospect Meadows, lots of projects that 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 may not. Rise to the rank of priority when it's compared to real, like, you know, absolute needs like the streets and sewers and and the and the basic infrastructure. You know, those things, you know, the the funds have really helped to make those quality of life improvements possible. And like you said, it's a big reason, part of the, a big reason why people are moving to Marion and then are enjoying their lives here, so.
Yeah, it's provided some flexibility even beyond that, because a couple of the projects were the hotel market study and the housing market study that we completed. So as a direct result of putting some money into that house or the hotel study, we have the Town Place Suites and all the associated development around it. With the housing study, we've been able to attract investment at the upper end of the market and at the affordable end of the market on multifamily. So it's been something that's also helped us build other assets around the community that bring additional income to the city. Because Town Place Suites has really been a driver for us on the hotel motel tax side as well.
I'm glad that you said that, I just am curious, those two studies you referenced, would that come out of the thirty percent, would that be deemed as a project?
Yes.
Okay, because I I found both of those, particularly the housing study, I think I was still on P and Z, that informed so many decisions. That we make, so those are valuable too, so I didn't even realize that those came from lost project funds, thanks.
It's really helped a lot with economic development, plus with with the hotel, you said that that made that possible. You look at the peripheral development around it, that that has spurred in terms of economic development and quality development that that we want to see. You know, it's hard to argue against that. Okay, other discussion? All right, that brings us to the end of the meeting, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting and we'll see everyone on, oh, go ahead.
Sorry.
Yes, no, no.
I just, I wrote a note here, because we're not going to meet again before the Fourth of July. So I just wanted to ask if something could be put on the agenda, I don't know if Chief Krebel would mind, or somebody could just kind of talk again about when fireworks are permitted, et cetera. They've been going off quite a bit already. So I just think for the record, if if somebody could talk briefly about that Thursday for the public meeting, it might, might help a little bit.
Sure, and and I think we could see if Amber would put out information on that, you know, between now and Fourth of July, go ahead.
Also, maybe as a postscript to that. Any changes from the legislative standpoint, new laws going in in force relative to the permissible location for fireworks sales, et cetera, that came out of the legislature would be useful to benchmark.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, we'll see everyone on Thursday.